For Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty twenty-four. This meeting slash hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless other was required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel Eight. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID eight-nine-seven-nine-zero-eight-zero-nine-seven-nine-three, or by calling nine-two-nine-two-zero-five-six-zero-nine-nine. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, the Assistant Town Manager, at ATM@AIR.MA.us, or nine-seven-eight-seven-seven-two-eight-two-two-zero, extension one hundred, prior to the meeting. We call Stan from the Quidditch Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda as presented?
I have none.
I have none. I'll take the moment.
I'll make a motion that the agenda be approved as submitted.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Agenda is approved. There's only one announcement I have tonight, and it's just a reminder of this weekend's Independence in the Air, the Fourth of July celebration. It's June twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. On June twenty-third.
It's twenty-second.
No, twenty-second, sorry. Oh, the dates on the website are wrong, so.
Yeah.
Twenty-second is movie night?
Yes, Saturday, the twenty-second, is the parade, all the events with the vendors and games down at the park. And then later on is the movie, which I believe will be ET.
Okay. And then on Sunday, there's the festival, and then on Sunday, there's local celebrity softball game at eleven AM at Carney Park. All right. Is there anybody here for public input? If you want to come on?
Sure. Hi, I'm Carolyn McCreary. I just wanted to announce that we will be having our second meeting of the Friends of the AIR COA Council on Aging next Tuesday at one o'clock. Everyone's welcome.
All right.
Where? Oh, it's going to be at the COA Center.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Just one quick announcement, since we're in the midst of our first heat wave, we're going to open up the cooling center at the police station community room from starting this evening through Friday. And we'll push that out on our social media platforms and we'll put it on the BMO website to some people. So like, it's at the community room at the police department.
Okay. Not seeing any other public input, I'd like to invite up Chris Henry from IC Federal Credit Union for check presentation.
Thank you very much. IC loves AIR, and it's kind of funny that we're giving a check for twenty-five-hundred dollars tonight for what we were putting as the home heating fund on the hottest day. But we know that you might use it this week because it's going to be so hot and you've got to find ways to help everybody out in the community. But it's a real partnership for us. We love being in AIR. And we just want to find ways that we can give back to help this community as much as we can. So just a little donation on our behalf, and thank you very much.
Hey.
Mr. Chair. We greatly appreciate IC's support. We'd like to do a picture with the board and Brittany Bodri, our town social worker. If she could join, she's been working with Alicia on this, and we greatly appreciate the support.
Absolutely.
Can we just start with the chair?
Yes.
Try not to get. Great. One, two, three. One, two.
I just wanted to do one. Go ahead. Sorry. Do you have a second, Chris? You're coloring for me.
I'm coloring for. All right.
Actually, I think somebody.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
For sure. There's two Chrissies. I got.
I'll be right down. I bank there.
All right. And just to close that out, I'll take a motion to accept the donation.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board happily accept the check for the Towns Fuel and Housing Emergency Fund in the amount of twenty-five-hundred.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Thank you again.
Our next agenda item, I'd like to welcome up the representatives from the Massachusetts Nurses Association for an update on the Nishova Valley Medical Center. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. My name's Audrey Strick, I'm a nurse at Nishova. I've been there for sixteen years. I'm also the co-chair of the MNA, the nurses' union, at the hospital. So we've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Comprion about a week ago about the status and kind of wanted to come and give everybody here an update. We don't know what's going on, which is one of the biggest problems, Stuart, that's not giving us. Where's you guys want to hear any information for anything? We do know that there are bids in process, hopefully for Nishova. What our goal is right now is we've been kind of planning for if there are no bids. So what's going on is they're, you know, putting out all of these, all the information to all the different, you know, businesses or companies that could buy Nishova and take it over. But because Stuart hasn't given us any information, we don't know if there's any bids. And on the twenty-fourth of this month, so Monday, all the bids have to be in. And on the twenty-seventh, I guess if there's more than one bid, which would be wonderful for us, then there will be kind of an auction, kind of where people can, they're going to open them up and then they can sweeten the deal, you know, like, oh, you know, we'll bid more, whatever. And then we will remain open. Our worry is if there are no bids, what do we do? And if we wait, you know, to we find out, we're going to be kind of behind the eight ball. So, you know, for us, what Stuart has put us in a position, all of the hospitals in Massachusetts, is that they have sold all the property out from under us. So when Essent, who used to own Stuart, I mean, who used to own Nishova, sold to Stuart back in two thousand and eleven, they sold the property, the land, the hospital, the land and the two office buildings. Actually, I think it was just one at the time, office building, for six million dollars to Stuart. And that was in two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eighteen, Stuart sold the hospital and the property to a company called MPT, which Stuart owns a portion of, for ninety-four million dollars. So, yeah, and they did it with all of the hospitals, same thing, like, it's huge inflation, so now it's big rent. That whoever comes to bid is going to have to pay this lease. So that's kind of the biggest problem with all the hospitals that they have. And they did it to all their hospitals, thirty-three of them, I think, across the country, that are all going to run into the same thing. So, you know, obviously, I'm sure you guys have all heard about the, you know, there'll be longer ambulance transports, there'll be longer, you know, the access to care will be for everybody. We've kind of taken it for granted that we've had a hospital here for a long time. And hopefully, nobody will ever need to know how important it is to have an emergency room right in their town or right, you know, in the next town over. But without one, it can cost lives and it will, you know, impact health, the healthcare, people with chronic illnesses, their specialty cares, you know, that come into the hospital, doctors once a month that they have to go to Boston for, it's a big deal, you know? So I think people don't think about it, they just assume it's there until it's not, and then it'll be too late. So what we've been doing and what hopefully we won't end up needing help with, but we may eventually need help from the town surrounding is, up until now, we've been pushing the governor to sweeten the deals for the bidders so that it will help kind of, they get, so the rent that they'll have to pay won't be as hard for them because there'll be some sort of incentives for bidders to bid on every hospital. Also for them to address the issue with the MPT, the company who is now, owns the hospital, or the building, not the hospital, but, so that they can somehow maybe come to some agreement that the police payments won't be as high. I don't know how that would work, but that's one of the things that we've been pushing them for. Also, we've been encouraging the state to get all of the players together, like the big owners of all the other hospitals, and do something to help the public health of our state. Because if all of these hospitals close, or even a few of them, we can't afford any of them to close. I mean, we're seeing in our ER, we're seeing anywhere from forty to sixty patients a day. Emerson and Leominster can't, already, they're, you know, overwhelmed. And Nishova never used to have a wait, and now we have a wait. And, you know, we have people coming from those hospitals saying, no, they said it was going to be eight hours till we're seen, ten hours till we're seen. You know, so if we close to manage that on a daily basis, it's a huge deal. The biggest thing would be, obviously, greater transparency from the state and from Stuart to find out what's going on because it's all been nothing, frickets, we have not, we don't know anything. And then encourage the state and local government to be prepared if there are no bidders, in worst-case scenario, to seize the hospital by imminent domain. And then have the state operate it until a bidder or buyer can be found. That's our kind of worst-case scenario. But, so that's where we're at. We won't really know anything, I guess, until the twenty-seventh, but. Where we are today.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, look, I, I can't imagine this town not having access to a hospital. I mean, you know, there's always been a hospital in the town of AIR. I guess what I would like to know, and maybe you know the answer, or maybe you don't, and if you don't, that's perfectly fine. But the process of actually closing a hospital, you know, just so people know, it's not an overnight thing.
No, no.
Yeah, so I just.
You have to give notice. I think it's ninety or hundred and twenty days, I can't remember off the top of my head, that they have to give notice. And then there's Department of Public Health, you know, hearings to say what are essential services, but there's, the Department of Public Health doesn't have a lot of teeth to, you know, like what just happened with Leominster. They were, you know, they didn't want to close the maternity. And everybody fought against it, but it still happened. They can ultimately, you know, close whatever they want. But in some cases, they can keep some things open for a while, like in Quincy, they did keep the ER open for, let me say, a couple of years, and then closed it, but it's really kind of up to Stuart. At this point, I don't even know on the day of, like, the bidding, if there is no bidding. Again, because we have no information, we don't know what's going to happen, but I know in order to close, they would have to give notice.
Well, it kind of bothersome, you know, when you think about it, and you're saying, you know, unlike in Leominster, they didn't want to close the maternity ward, everybody fought against it. So who's making this decision if everyone disagrees? So that's, that's kind of troublesome. So, but, you know, you have my support.
So what is your ask for this board directly? I mean, support by, in what kind of form?
It's some of the letters that you're sending, if you want to.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, as I mentioned when I met with them, I think it was last week or the week before, the Nurses Association is aware of the town's support, and your board support has sent previous letters stressing the importance of this facility, not only from a public health point of view, which is the key in medical, but it also is the second-largest employer in the town of AIR and into the region. So when we met, one of the things is perhaps the board would consider, and I believe you've done two previous letters, but perhaps another letter. I mean, so that would also copy the governor and the delegation and so forth. Because you're absolutely right, the most frustrating thing is there is a cone of silence when it comes to Stuart and the state on this. And it seems like they're running the clock down to the auction. So one would be another letter. Additionally, I understand that the Nishova Valley Chamber of Commerce, all the businesses and so forth, is going to be doing a letter of support as well. And I had offered, you know, been in contact with my respective colleagues of the seventeen towns in the Nishova Valley, a letter coming from all of the towns as well as in support. And they did do a press, you did a press conference a couple of weeks ago at Depot Square that the board is aware of, with the, some of our firefighters were in support of that. So I think at this point, the most frustrating part is we know that something is going to happen, but we don't know what is going to happen. So I think just a continued position of solidarity of the importance of the hospital. And one of the things we talked about, another fear is we don't want, in an ideal world, we want the same level of services at Nishova now. Concern is we don't want it to turn into one of these urgent care places or so forth. So perhaps that could, we could further stress that in the letter as we move forward. And because it's been no transparency and, that's sort of where we're at at this point.
Yeah.
And it's the end of this month, right, as you mentioned?
Yes.
And there are nine hospitals in Massachusetts that.
Well, Norwood is closed because of the flood, but nine, but eight actual functioning hospitals right now that are. We do have a petition going, I don't know if that can be put up on the town website, like, the link for that, don't know if that's an option or not. That, just in support of keeping a hospital open, it's from the American Coalition. Get the official name. But to get a link to that, just in support of keeping the hospital open, it's another pressure to show the support to Governor Haley.
Can you check on that?
Yep, that's possible. I just, yep. And Mr. Chair, and for what I know that Senator Eldridge and the state, the state legislative delegation is aware and is supportive. And I know that, not to speak for the state senator, but the last time I talked to him, he was, I mean, he did not get much information from the governor's office as to what the plan is.
Well, I mean, it just, I mean, not only will this, you know, affect public health, but it will also drive up all of our costs, you know, including our ambulance fund.
Usually, there's the time to get Emerson back or.
Yeah, you know, so this, this is, this, I think, everybody who is listening to you and is aware of this needs to start talking and, you know, we have to, let's get a bus and we all go to, State House and say, hey, you know, it's, you can't let this happen.
So I think it's a little hospital, so it's a small impact, but it's a, in my opinion, it's a bigger impact because there's not a hospital on every corner. So, you know, like, to get, it's another, there was somebody in Pepperell that came up to me when I was at work and said, you know, if you guys close, it'll take me thirty-five, forty minutes to get to an ER, not just walking in the door, no less to be seen, you know? So it's.
Right, and I, and I think it's disingenuous if, you know, the state talks about, hey, we're always here, you know, for public health and all this, and we want to stress this. And then it's allowed to happen, then it's like, well, that's a bit of hypocrisy, so.
She keeps using the verbiage, like, maintain access to care, maintain.
You know, we don't want to maintain access to care. We want the care we currently have.
I agree.
And, you know, maybe she needs to come here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. You don't have to convince me. So, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Our next agenda item is the Senior Center Site Selection and Building Committee update. Hello, Dr. Delphi, how are you? Hello, Mr. Biskin.
I just wanted to go over, give you guys a report in the packet as well. But since September, we appointed our committee, we've been working hard. We have, the need for a senior center still is very pressing. Our current facility is just not large enough to meet the diverse programming needs of our seniors. We don't have enough program space, we don't have confidential office space, like the walls in my office don't go over to the ceiling. So I can't have a confidential conversation. It's not ADA compliant, there's not enough parking, there's no commercial kitchen. And as we are leasing the space from the housing authority, we are subject to their schedule as well. So for example, we were closed two days this week so they could replace flooring in our adjacent room. That work won't be done on time, and so we closed a third, fourth day for that. And then same thing again coming up next month for a roofing project. So we really need a bigger, you know, suitable space, a space that the town can maintain. So we looked at, we, per your charge, we looked at all fifty-three town-owned sites. And based on the size needed for the project, road accessibility, de-restrictions, things like that, narrowed to fifty-three out of eleven, and then five, and then three, and then at our most recent, two sites. Those sites are one fifteen Washington, which is the school complex. But we're looking down on the Groton Harbor Road site near the practice field, on the practice field, but near the practice field, as well as Bishop Road out on the DPW land, you know, where the brush dome. So in addition to looking at all the town-owned sites, we issued an RFP, the second one, overall, in this effort for town-owned land to see if any of the private landowners were interested in selling their land to the town. Again, for the second time, no viable applications were submitted. So we continue to focus on those two parcels. We've also hired Catlin Architecture from a pool of six firms that were looking for the job. And we've done a lot of work with them, that this initial package is valued at a hundred thousand dollars. And we have worked on a draft program plan for an approximately fourteen thousand square foot senior center with a multipurpose room that seats a hundred and fifty for lunch, a classroom that will, is divisible, as well as a multipurpose room that will seat sixty, a reception, cafe, and library space, game room, arts and craft space, fitness equipment room, commercial kitchen, wellness room, or staff spaces. So we are coming along, making a lot of progress on that. And our next steps include examining the soil data and traffic data for the two sites that we're focused in on now. Doing estimate of the utilities cost for both of those sites. Continuing conversations with the relevant town departments, the DPW and the school department, related to both of those sites. And coming up soon, we hope to have some conceptual plans available for the committee and then eventually the public to look at. And last step there was really focusing on public input to get a sense of, of what the town thinks about it.
I just, I guess I had a couple of thoughts. First of all, the outreach to private property was pretty disappointing. It's the second time we tried that. So we basically came in with the idea that we'd try to find a couple pieces of town land to work on, which is where we're at right now. We've been fortunate in having DPW who has been a big assist, so we have to mention that every time we report to you guys. We should tell you the DPW has kind of been helping us research the land and the fact that we have quite a bit of internal engineering available here and the data that they can provide about the land and so forth. So as Katie mentioned, the kind of the process that we're in right now to get to the architect that we selected, we did an extensive RFP again with help to scope the work from the DPW. And then we had six candidates, as she mentioned, we cut it down to three and finally made the final selection. And it was very close to choice because fortunately for us, the architects that came in and bid were all, basically all six were qualified and had done similar kind of work. So we did end up with an architect who happened to be the one that has done sixty, either combination of senior center construction, a senior center, development project, concept plans and so forth, so very, very qualified, probably the most qualified gentleman in the state. So we do have a top-notch team working on that aspect of the job. In addition, what was interesting to me is that the architect, he wants to be more involved in just the design of the building. So in my experience, I typically, we typically delay, you know, maybe civil engineers and other people along the way. He's very interested in the soils, he's very interested in the civil engineering, wants to be part of the entire conversation. So we feel we'll get another assist along the way with that. And before we get the concept plans, we won't be just looking at the building, we'll be looking at how the building sits on the land as well, and how the land works for parking, how the land works for accessibility, traffic and things like that. So we're well on the way to getting more in-depth understanding of the project and eventually budgeting for the project and so forth down the line. So it's been, it's been a very enlightening and good process. You have a good committee, I think we had nine on the committee. And we've had good attendance, and I think it's been a good process and we're going to.
It's very exciting. Question?
I know they're all working hard.
All right, well, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Moving along, our next is updates for the Department of Public Works. Dan, Kim, how are you?
Hey.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hello. I have a mixed bag of good news and bad news. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is the challenges that the water division is facing, we need to demand. So whether it's the hot weather, or, you know, people irrigating their lawns, or the recent lack of rains, we've seen an increase in water consumption, and we're just not meeting the demand. Under.
I'm sorry, could you speak up?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
So we're just not meeting demand. And so what I want to, what I want to kind of do is remind you of what it was like before P-Phos treatment. So before P-Phos treatment, the tanks would be full, then they would lower, and the wells and the treatment plants would start, and they'd meet demand and fill the tanks at the same time. And once the tanks were full, the wells and the treatment plants would shut off. And that would happen every day for several hours a day. I'm heard, I've been told that the wells and the treatment plants would be off for maybe seventeen hours a day, something like that. So that's not where we're at now. Where we're at is post-P-Phos treatment, where there's a restriction with the P-Phos treatment plant. And so we're just not able to produce the water at the same rate that we were prior to P-Phos treatment. So what I've estimated is that on a daily basis, we're making six hundred to eight hundred thousand gallons less water a day than we used to prior to treatment. We're just, in a twenty-four-hour period, we're just not able to produce enough water. And so because of that, and the treatment plant and the wells are just running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So I also want to just kind of emphasize that this is a P-Phos treatment problem, this is not a supply problem. The aquifers are not in a drought situation. And prior to the P-Phos restriction, our infrastructure was such that we were able to meet demand. We were able to, to have enough water for expansion and economic development. And we have several master plans that kind of allude to this. So this really is a P-Phos problem rather than a supply problem. And the good news is, you know, you may have heard, is that we have a solution coming, which is a clear well and pumping station. And we, we're in the design stages right now. It's an engineering solution to an engineered problem. And so we hope to be in development or in construction by early twenty-twenty-five. And this will maybe be behind us for next summer, but we have to get through this summer. And so far, we're not getting through this summer. In the packet, I put up, I put this morning tank levels. And so what I really wanted to emphasize with this is that this is just a snapshot, first thing in the morning, what's tank levels look like. What we really want them to be is full, first thing in the morning. Early in the year, in the wintertime, you see that it's kind of stabilized. And then once we hit spring, it becomes more variable, and now we're hitting summer, and it's become very variable. And the two lines are really important. The top line is where the tanks are full, and the bottom line is when the tank is considered empty and people are losing pressure and people are losing water. So we are looking at those levels that are so low to begin with, and then they're just drying down during the day after that. And we're getting very, like, critically close to not having enough water for the day. This is why over the last, last weekend, I believe there was six to the eight, we actually had to, we were in a critical situation and we had to purchase water from Devon, so that was unfortunate. Again, what helped us is I reached out to. Again, what helped us is I reached out to our large customers and they were accommodating Pepsi in particular. They, they slowed production on Friday. We stopped production on Saturday and Sunday. Like they are trying to be as on board as possible, but we still um, just aren't quite making it. So um, what I'm asking is, I'm making the recommendation that we declare a, a state of water supply conservation due to the fact that the demand for the water is approaching capacity of the system. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Not really a question, but I thi- I think sometimes what, what doesn't seem to come across, at least some of the comments that I've seen on Facebook, is that they're not understanding, you know, the supply versus, you know, uh, so basically what you're saying, if you want us to depollute your water, you need to, you know, conserve so that we can depollute your water and, 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 you know, without affecting you uh, with this massive drainage. And, and I don't think that that somehow that mess is just coming across. And, and I, the way I've worded it is not the way you would word it, but I'm trying to simplify the message.
We're actually very proud that we're able to produce PFAS-free water.
Exactly, exactly. And we are so ahead of the game on, on so many towns and everything, but you know, everybody's out there swapping, like, well, you should have done this, you should have done that. And that's why we don't have a supply. And again, and I'm just trying to kind of help repeat your message of it's not a supply issue, you know, we got to treat the water and that takes time. So what used to take thirty seconds is now taking ninety seconds. And if everyone would just, you know, turn off the faucet just a little bit quicker instead of running it for three minutes, run it for a minute and a half, you know, little things, it would make a big difference. And I think that that, that message gets lost with some people. And, and you know, so I'm just trying to kind of reword it a little bit in hopes of help.
Yes, thank you. Through the chairman, we'll be ramping up our educational efforts in the coming weeks to try to make that message a little more known throughout the
I, I think you guys are terrific there.
And you anticipate um, the new clear well, it um, bringing us back to normalcy, if you will?
Yeah, very close to, if not right at, the pre-PFAS treatment levels of production.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair, just uh, through you, um, I just want to say first of all, a special thanks to Dan and Kimberly on this issue and the water division. They keep, as the board knows, keeps us updated, sometimes more than once a day. Just to build off what selectmen Livingston said to stress, because I think it's important, is one, we are one of the first water systems in the country that are effectively treating for PFAS. And one of the challenges is when you're the first to do something, we've learned that that treatment is affecting the output. The good news is that, just to stress it, this is, this is temporary. We have to get the clear well constructed and built. The other good news is through this board that's been authorized, it's in the design phase, and it's going to be funded, not at a cost to the taxpayer, through the efforts of DPW. Our challenge is to get to next spring, when we get the clear well on line, so it's temporary. And I would say that the last point I would support, I, I support the recommendation on the water conservation. It's the same one this board authorized last summer. Um, and I think the final point, Kimberly and the DPW director spoke to this before, is it's a temporary issue, that there is adequate uh, adequate capacity. It's just this technological challenge we have. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll take a motion.
I'm trying to think how to work.
I can do something, yes. Uh, make a motion that the board um, declare a state of water supply conservation and implement an outdoor water use ban effective June twenty-fourth to two thousand twenty-four. Outdoor water use are controlled as follows. A, watering with a hand hose only. B, watering with a can, water can only. All other outdoor watering with, shall be prohibited. Seconded. All those in favor?
I.
She passed this.
Thank you. Um, the second thing is the execution of a contract, the Grove Pond Water Treatment Plant Resin Media Replacement. So this is all part of the Grove Pond uh, PFAS treatment. There are two vessels that have media. One of the vessels has, media has become spent and it's time to replace it. So we went out to bid, um, bids came back and uh, we're recommending that we execute the contract for Calgon Carbon Corporation in the amount of two hundred eleven thousand four hundred dollars.
I was just adding some curiosity, the, what is the lifespan of um, the resin?
That's a very good question. We're still so new that we're still trying to figure it out. We're still trying to gauge how long we can go with, with the resins. So I had to tell you, I'd say we can last about a year for vessels, so this would be a recurring, once a year replacing a vessel.
Okay, that was my question.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, it, it just would be toward, to Robert, and maybe you're going to be talking about it later and, and if you are, I apologize for jumping ahead. Um, do we have any ARPA funds and do you, do you want to use our funds or everything?
It's definitely being paid for with the Army grant.
Excellent, okay. Okay, that's even better. So, so never mind, Robert. But yes, I will be touching on that. Okay. So, um.
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
Uh, make a motion that the select board execute the contract for the Grove Pond Water Treatment Plant Resin Media Replacement Project in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand four hundred dollars for signature by the board.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board, uh, chair says aye.
It's actually uh, signature by the chair, it looks like. Just definitely.
Okay, it was written.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the last thing I have is an intermunicipal agreement for emergency water supply interconnection between the Town of Air and the MDFA. It's a Mass Development Financial Association, I believe, and um, who is the owner of the Devon's Water Utility. So we have had kind of a gentleman's agreement between Devens and Air where um, like just last weekend, we had to purchase water from Devens, but now we have a formal contract that's been looked over by council and everybody's approved. And so the last step is for having the, the board sign the contract.
Any questions?
No. I'll make a motion that the select board execute the intermunicipal agreement between Air and MDFA, owner of the Devon's Water Utility. And for signature by, by the board? Yeah, okay.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
All right. Mr. Chair, so the next item on the agenda is the Sandy Pond School Association License Agreement. So in the audience is uh, Irving Rockwood from Sandy Pond School Association as well. So in late twenty twenty-three, Irv contacted me um, about installing a pathway and also a handful of parking spaces behind the school, along the sort of dead-end driveway back there. And that dead-end driveway, that area, if you look on a map, is actually part of a town right-of-way. Um, so we went through the process of how do we, you know, formalize this and, you know, protect the town and also protect Sandy Pond School Association. Um, and so what we came up with with town council was to put together a license agreement. And basically that allowed Sandy Pond School Association, or allows them to instruct and manage, manages liability as well um, of this pathway and parking that they're going to put in. And also allows the town to revoke authorization of that. So say fifty years from now, the town needs that right-of-way as a road or something. So that, at that, you have to agree, ways to protect yourself. So um, you know, it's great working, um, Irv on this and it's important for the school, I think. So um, the license agreement was included in the packet and so, for signature by the board.
Any questions?
I'm all for anything we do for the Sandy Pond School.
Yeah. All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the select board execute the license agreement with Sandy Pond School Association as provided for signature by the board.
Seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the final item is a stormwater utility advisory work group update. Um, so as you're likely aware, um, there is a public forum coming up, information and input meeting. It was going to be scheduled this Thursday, but due to the extreme heat and the air conditioning potential loud sounds up in the Great Hall, we pushed it to Monday, the twenty-fourth. So, so this coming Monday. But the, uh, meeting will be at six PM in the Great Hall on Monday. Um, the work group's been meeting since September and working on rates and regulations and gotten to this point where we're ready to um, present that to the public, get some input, show them this option that's being considered, that they potentially help um, um, fund stormwater in the future. Um, and we, we need that feedback from the public. Um, and one thing I'd also like to mention, we'll be getting a video out. It's actually up on the web, but I haven't advertised it fully. Um, just, it's kind of basic. Here's the importance of stormwater, here's stormwater management there, what we've been doing, what we're looking at as part of this stormwater utility. So take a look at it if you get a chance. And that's kind of where we're at. So we'll have a lot more information in the next update we give the board.
Any questions? All right. All right, Stan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Robert, town manager report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. Uh, in the packet, you have the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the select board last met on June fourth. Uh, in terms of the administrative update, um, a few items. Um, I'm looking for, for the July sixteenth um, meeting with the board um, to do a brief presentation on potential recommended goals uh, for the board and myself for the year ahead. As I mentioned at the last select board meeting, I've, I've talked with the department heads and we're in the process of sort of setting their goals and so forth, which would help, you know, fuel this discussion. But also doing a review of the current master plan implementation plan. So on the sixteenth, uh, the board will have in the packet, we'll just do a very brief presentation as to all of the things, which is exciting, that have been accomplished. What's left and of those, which do we want to, you know, prioritize um, moving, moving forward um, on that. Related to that, since the, the last meeting, uh, when I met with the departments, right now there's approximately the sixty-six thousand dollars outstanding in ARPA funds. And I've asked um, all of the departments to submit um, potential um, projects, uh, programs um, that could be considered. Um, would like the board to think about that as well, as we talked about last time. And, and for the sixteenth, we'll be prepared. I'll have a memo in the packet um, with specifics. And the plan is on the sixteenth to have a plan to spend the last of the money. There's one last project um, with DPW, I'm just reviewing, that um, the good news is due to some efficiencies on his end, might be a little, little more than sixty-six thousand. We'll know for sure on the sixteenth, but we will have a, a plan. And in talking with the accountant and the finance manager, um, if we put that plan into effect on July, uh, it'll give enough time to close out all of the ARPA. I think you've said it best. It's an interesting problem to, to have, is all hosts keep moving. Also, related to that, a- as everything goes as planned, on Thursday, June twentieth, um, the town will close on the purchase of seventy-one Sandy Pond Road. Um, town council has everything, as does the, the seller, and that closing uh, should be completed and recorded on June twentieth. Then we'll notify the board once that happens. In terms of next steps, uh, Ms. Antonellis will, will add the, the property to the town's um, insurance. DPW has been looking at for initially, can we do some interim parking right now for this season? I want to stress interim parking because the public process hasn't happened and the decision for the final uh, what we're going to do with that hasn't happened.
We could put a sign, this is interim parking until we've decided what we're going to do.
Right, there'd be some signage to that effect. The other, the other, the other piece to that, um, as the board is aware, the, uh, the DPW director has the Sandy Pond, Sandy Pond Complete Street Safe Street Infrastructure Project. So a piece of the land is also going to be used for some staging for that. So we'll have a, uh, update on what the interim plan is. What I'd like to have prepared for the board to at least start the discussion on July sixteenth is how the board, how the town would like to proceed, like give it some more thought with the process as to developing that for the purposes as presented to town meeting. Obviously, we want select board input, parks and rec input, planning board input, and most importantly, public input. So this is a good thing, it's exciting. Uh, I, it's been a um, an interesting process and since town meeting authorized it, um, we're finally closing on that. So more to come on that front. Um, in terms of that, uh, we're in good shape, closing out for the um, fiscal year. Um, FY twenty uh, four that we're closing out. Um, we're in great shape on the budget front. If we go into the finance committee on Thursday to have the FinCom review and approve the RFTs that this board previously reviewed and approved. We, there are no other RFTs needed. Everything is in good shape on that front. And we're looking to the new fiscal year, I fly first. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions from members of the board on any um, personnel uh, matters or any administrative matters, and then I just have just two quick action items.
Questions?
All right. One appointment uh, for tonight, um, respectfully recommending that the board appoint Mr. Scott Hood of Air to the capital planning committee to fill a vacancy as a resident representative for a term to expire on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. And you have in the packet his request.
I don't know.
Never heard of him.
I mean, I mean, will he, does he show up? Is he comfortable and everything? I mean,
He does, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. So. Oh, we had to pick on Scott. Uh, I have none.
I don't.
Oh.
All right.
I'll make a motion that the select board approves Scott Hood to be on the capital planning committee.
Seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And the chair, gladly says aye.
Okay. And then, uh, secondly, we sort of have, have part two of the appointments and a special thanks to Ms. Antonellis for putting this together. You have a memo in your packet of in- individuals that are seeking to be uh, reappointed uh, to their respective boards and committees and to the terms. Um, everything is in the um, memo and you'll see that we are just adjusting um, somewhere along the line on a couple of the ZBA appointments, just as last time on the COA appointments. We lost sort of that cadence. We consulted with town council to correct that and we're in good shape. So recommending those individuals in the memo be reappointed by the select board.
Any questions? I'll take a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion that the select board uh, approve the appointed appointments as presented in the packet.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Um, there were no new business or select board member questions listed, any?
I have none.
None. Um, we've launched an approval of meeting minutes for June fourth, two thousand twenty-fourth. Any, are there changes?
I saw no issues.
I saw nothing.
Um, I'll make a motion that the meeting minutes from June fourth, two thousand twenty-four be approved as submitted.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye.
And. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the select board move into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, for exemption number two, non-union personnel, COA director contract ratification, and that the board adjourn from executive session, not returning to open session.
Seconded. All those in favor? All right. Roll call. And remember Livingston?
Yes.
Or remember Travis?
Yes.
And the chair says yes. Thank you, everybody. We are now in executive session.